I think we better get back on track here. We'll come back from recess at 10:18, back into our meeting. And, uh, Davis here. Let's go ahead, Dave.
What do you have?
Cool like me, Charlie.
I know. I need to relax.
Charlie's over there.
Charlie's not even on the agenda.
No.
No, I was just sitting in on it. I know, but he's not on the agenda. All right, so I'll come back and report you guys.
Dave's a fast talker.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't, I don't mess around. I've got four things. We can, all we have to do is look at him and he'll start stuttering, so we can do an extra.
Remind him of the camera.
How you guys look.
I knew I could do it. Denise mentioned two things.
I have four things.
Do you really?
You only have four things in front of you? Brad did.
I only have two things.
Well, I'll listen to Tammy talk for.
My first one, please, the airport addition. Got to hit it? Or you got to?
Yeah, let's go and do that. All it is is an amendment to, uh, under, under, uh, federal pre-accord regulations, they had to change our lease number. I don't understand why totally, 100% why. It's just, the lease is already in place. It's just showing the change in the lease. Number change, that's all it is.
I'm gonna need a copy of that, Dave. I don't have any.
And so this is just redoing it. It's a, it'll extend the term out, or is it the same? August 1st to 16th to July 31st of 2021?
Yes.
And this renewal term added all the way out to 2036, right?
Yes.
That's a long time to keep the rates. Is there a inflation factor on the rates or anything? There must be.
Well, the lease has already been approved, hasn't it? Yeah, that, that's, the lease changed. That was, the way I read it before was it merely changes the number system they sent up to us. We were in, already in agreement.
I remember reading that now. Can't give more dollars. We're still looking for dollars.
And then I'll, I'm gonna do the commercial lease with the airport amendment to lease.
Which one are you on now?
Uh, the school district number seven. COIC, uh, moved out and then, uh, school district number seven took over the youth program for where they had the work education shot that we leased to them on the lease that we had with them. We just basically, things all stayed status quo and then they, uh, with the, uh, just changed the name to Lake County School District number seven. But I wanted to prove that on that pay come in and giving you guys an update on how their program is working in front of you guys.
Yeah, and Dave, you and I had some of that discussion.
Yeah, industrial 1240 South Angeles.
I, I think that's really important.
Uh huh.
I think.
I didn't have that either.
I think the board of commissioners need to say, do we want quarterly updates? Do we want every half year updates?
I think you should be quarterly, in my opinion. I recommend quarterly. Does things change throughout your different projects?
Well, I think it's such a good program. They're, they're starting out, you know, following the same footprint as COIC. I would like to see quarterly updates. What about you?
Here to start with.
That, that's not written in the, the lease, but that could be an agreement that they're gonna make to, to them. Next?
Uh, next will be the bid from Goose Lake Rail for our, uh, a bridge repair, a reconstruction grant for bridge repair. I talked with legal counsel. We are, they're really not, what we need, what we need from the board is the board declared emergency under, uh, the local review board rule number six, which there is not an ORS to that. There is NORs to emergency, but under the local review board rule number six.
Local.
And if you have questions, you can ask Jim about that tomorrow.
Yeah, we'll make sure that we follow all the appropriate guidelines, Jim, tomorrow.
So we need to get moving on this ASAP.
Okay.
I have the, the emergency ORS, but I don't, I don't wanna get that because if I.
Well, we'll let legal counsel guide us down.
Right, yes. And then, uh, Lakeview ready mixed contract that said, uh, their legal looked at it. They have some changes that you guys will have a chance to.
We, we have that on for tomorrow for legal counsel to be here. That's why it's not on today.
I don't have a copy of that, though.
I, uh, remember we had some discussions today. Legal counsel, I have emailed back and forth with the legal counsel.
Cause you have your copies somewhere.
What third legal counsel is talking about, um, I think that whenever we put this together, we, we might have made an error ourselves on limitations on use that says, um, that the third party, such a party is also agreeing not to use property in violation of state law and county ordinances. I thought that the general discussion over the time of this is federal, state, county.
It was.
They'd have wanted in there by their attorney. That was something we discussed in open session.
Yeah.
And that's just what we do. And then, uh, the other, the third attorney's question is, uh, title insurance and so on. I can't remember on my motion, but I know that it was discussion that the purchaser was liable for all costs associated with, uh, transferring that product, property over to them. So, um, I think we may have some disagreements with their attorney. We'll have that discussion further tomorrow with legal counsel. And I guess Denise might be doing it now, looking to see what my motion was, but.
I recall that being your motion. I, I read your.
So, that's the thing, was as I reviewed it to, um, response to their response.
Yeah, I, I just received it, so Denise thinks my copy's somewhere else. I'll take a little bit deeper look at this today.
Legal, the latter was from legal counsel, so.
Right, but I mean, this, you had it in your pack. I didn't have any of those things in my packet. Okay? Anything else, Dave?
I think I have enough.
Okay. Thank you.
Don't thank me, thank God you got.
I don't wanna do that, no. I knew you'd say that. I think we'll hold the vehicle requests till one. And, you know, Charlie, wanna come up?
What, Charlie? Well, it's Denise's.
Of course Denise is Denise's. That's correct.
Okay, so Charlie, Charlie should speak to his grant. He did get a grant to purchase a vehicle, um, and so he used the funding to purchase a vehicle. We went out for, um, bid request, we did ask for three. We received two back. Homeowner company was our lowest, um, bid at 34,925. It's gonna be for a 2018 Ford Explorer, kind of like what we have in pool. Charlie feels that that is adequate for his needs, um, and it will actually really help us with our pool vehicles and with Charlie's personal learning, he'll arrange a vehicle, cause a lot of times when he's traveling, our pool vehicles are out, so, good job, Charlie for getting the grants. Good job.
Still a question on that.
Yes, sir.
Um, I don't know if it's appropriate or not, not in this, dollars and everything. Will you be putting graphics or anything on that so people know that it's a veterans?
Absolutely, that's the plan. I'll be getting with, uh, oh, what's, what's his name? Benders. Get with vendors, I'm gonna have one of the magnet decals put on the sides.
Yeah, um, so that'd be a removable one. I know on the special transportation, it's been pretty well received on the transportation vehicles that have quite extensive graphics.
Right.
I didn't know in your line of work, Charlie, if, if you wanted something like that or if you're going that direction.
I don't think we'll need a rap. I think just enough to let people know what the vehicle's all about. When they see it, they know to come see it. Kind of like to have a page. Okay.
So, is it okay if I bury from the agenda this a little bit?
Yeah.
Well, being Charlie's in here, I'd like to tell him publicly, thank you for his work on veteran services. We received the email that on every age group, you're a higher percentage of people that receive services in Lake County than any place else in the state.
Yes, thank you.
And Charlie, that's very commendable. Our veterans in the public deserve that, and I publicly thank you for that.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. Well, I agree with you commissioners, I shared with Charlie last week, but I told Charlie at that time I wasn't gonna bring it up in public because I didn't want everyone to know how good a job he's doing besides us, so. Well done, Charlie.
We didn't know how good a job he was. He told us how good a job he was.
No, we know.
Would you hold that from until rooms packed?
Well, thank you, Dave. Now, Charlie, it's been outstanding, as, as we've all shared with you last week when we received that notification on the services, service levels, as Commissioner Winter said, for all age levels and different entities. So, I mean, we're leading the pack. You're leading the pack. Your efforts and your dedication is leading the pack for the state of Oregon.
Well, I couldn't do without the support of the commissioners, so I should appreciate everything you guys have done.
Thank you. Oh, let's not approve this vehicle now. Okay, we'll take that up tomorrow for approval. Denise, you wanna go ahead? You've got a couple more items.
Sure. So, um, we have two copier leases that are up. In our, one's in the clerk's office, one's in the assessor's office. And we've gone out and done some research on copiers for the area. Boy, I cleaned the room, don't I? We're all alone now, except for Jimmy. Um, and my recommendation is to move away from our current provider of RICO and move to Canon copiers. Um, the lease on these two machines actually will be about a hundred dollars less than what we currently pay, um, for the two machines in place. Um, but we also have had some significant issues with, um, our serviceability and dependability of the two machines that are currently in there. And our research has shown that Canon's been much more attentive to their machines, so my recommendation is to approve the two machines presented by Canon for those two.
So Denise, on the second page where it's under the clerk's office, uh, information?
Uh huh.
It shows the, what Canon will do to finish paying the lease payment and then what the cost is per month?
Correct.
Is that for both of those?
That is for both machines.
Okay. And how much a month savings is that?
Right at a hundred dollars a month. It's not a huge savings.
Compared, yeah, that ends up quite a bit in a year's time in life.
Yep. Well, we're just really experiencing a lot of downtime. RICO's, um, taking about a week to get a person out here to fix a copier and they're not always repaired, portion of the time around, so we're having some issues. So that's that one. Um, for the other one, we went out for an additional grant for our transit program. Um, we asked for $50,000 to kind of make up for lost funding for this plan. And we were awarded the 50,000. Um, it does come at a match with a match of 10, 10.27%. Um, we did go out for RFP with our two providers because it's enhancement dollars, so not bringing in any new providers. And my recommendation is to award 12,000 to Intercor Family and 38,000 to Senior Center. That, of course, is gonna be reduced by their match. They'll pay their match from their state fund.
Very good.
Mormon.
Is that it?
That's it for me?
Um, we, we do, um, have in here, Commissioner, a copy of the resignation of Barb Stevens, Fair Board member. Just like to public meeting recognize her dedication over the years and her support of our fair grounds and acknowledge that in public meeting. And ask Denise to put together a letter of appreciation to the board of commissioners for her, I'm sure, on the Fair Board. The Fair Board will be advertising and making a recommendation to the board of commissioners in the future for their replacement, which that's the process. Fair Board narrows it down, send to the recommendation to board of commissioners. They'll make a decision as the board of commissioners to appoint to the Fair Board, so.
And along those lines, in my, uh, later part of the day, spending in Northlake County, the Christmas Valley area specifically, last Friday, I visited with quite a few clerks. And on most of the occasions, I mentioned this opening that was coming up for anybody that might want to throw their hat in the ring, absolutely part of, um, the future growth and prosperity of our Fair Board and fairgrounds and activities.
Yes, very good. Um, in that letter, would, I would like for you to acknowledge her dedication to the remodeling of the restrooms and, uh, the, all the flowers, so on, zap. I don't wanna say cosmetic, all the, the more professional attractions that she's been able to help guide, provide out there. Very, very well appreciated, a lot of energy out of the lady. Very much appreciated. So I, that's what I had, Commissioner.
Okay, so we're down to one last item. It's the Central Oregon Cohesive Strategy Collaborative Support Request from the current coordinator of the Central Oregon Cohesive Strategy Collaborative Group, of which we're a member. And I'm struggling with this, not because it's a big dollar amount and I think it could easily come out of economic development. I didn't specifically talk to Denise about that, but I know with our increase, we still have many as available, just as a thought, but probably the more important discussion, because I can't talk out of both sides of my mouth on this issue and be fair to what I believe. And that is simply put, the AOC and to that end, and maybe I'll do that later on type update, but maybe I'll cover it here in part. Susan Morgan, who's the new staff for Public Lands, AOC Public Lands, has been visiting with me a long time, is kind of on our panel, she's here, we'll have AOC. But relative to the discussion yesterday when Susan called, was our participation in the subgroup of federal forest lands, the, the, it's not, it's, uh, I'm losing the term for, it's a subset of public lands that is organized and has a budget for federal land issues. And we had quite a lengthy discussion. She brought it up, she brought it up again, and we're gonna talk about it at AOC. I told her that for the past few years, as she was aware, we haven't paid our 4,500 or 600 or whatever it is dues, as part of our overall AOC dues to that subcommittee, simply because I came to the board and suggested that we had a lot of duplication and we were spending here and there as counties on similar type organizations doing the very same thing and quite honestly, in most cases, not talking to each other and ultimately delivering messages back in DC to our members of Congress that might be different than what another one of our organizations that we support does, uh, or messages. She said that it doesn't look like it would be financially viable with the committee because they reorganized and they put all three, East Morgan, Counties Association, the ONC Counties and AOC into one committee format, i.e., it might be Public AOC Public Lands, but it's a three-headed, uh, organization now as far as the chair of the organization's a tri-chair, but they still have this subset committee of federal lands. Well, Lake County is not paying into it. Grant County is now not paying into it. Invader County is not paying into it. The total's around 14,000 or 15,000, but they're short. Due to tighter budgets at AOC, she said it wouldn't probably be viable going forward and it wasn't facetiously, and I said, so, is that a bad thing? And, uh, quite frankly, I don't think it is. I think it goes back to public lands. So I'm a little off base, but a reminder of how I brought it to the board to not duplicate in light of the Central Oregon Collaborative, uh, request of the five counties that make up the Central Oregon Collaborative that cover the lands in all the counties that are part of the Deschutes National Forest, which we're a recipient, when they do work there, of the, the forest health and we're a recipient in, in concept of the revenue sharing that comes off of those lands. This collaborative represents for the executive director going forward. And our, our request, or the, the request of us is a 2% contribution of the total cost, which I was just looking through here and I probably need some, I need to look at some of my other stuff that I didn't probably send it to Denise. But, uh, it, it, it does break out all the different areas of activities that we have something, uh, present in our Deschutes National Forest lands in Lake County. And that's how they ended up coming up with the 2% contribution for the, somewhere between 138,000 to 150,000 this first year to get this director position up and going because it's, it's been being done volunteer-wise and they feel it's really important to get a actual person, uh, assigned that. So, the ask for is right at $2,250 for us. And I know one of the questions would be, is this ongoing? And I would suggest it's only ongoing if we do approve it this time to contribute the 2,250. I hope, and I'll firm that number up, but, cause I'm not finding it here.
Well, I'm, I'm looking on the final results on page six. You want it to page six, Dan?
Maybe that's it.
Um, final cost distribution, funding distribution at 150,000. Our, our amount would be 3,469 dollars.
This is a different page six. Yeah, I, I, we've got a couple of page sixes in there.
And, so I'm just trying to follow, I haven't looked back at the.
Yeah, I, I need to find that, Commissioner, because it clearly says that, but the amount that actually was on the one spreadsheet. Joe did send me a new spreadsheet, maybe that's the one I sent to Denise and that very well may be that amount. Because the percentage is real close to what, uh, the spread of that at 150,000 would be. So yes, there.
So if, and would, are we talking within this budget year? Will their budget follow the same as our budget process? Was this a request proposing to us for the remaining of this year or is it to start July 1? But.
It's to initially, Joe called me yesterday, he's way back from Wyoming. We haven't chatted because I had questions for him on this. And unfortunately, I don't have those answers, but I think as much as anything, and it wouldn't be full funding, uh, within this budget year. I can pretty much say that. I can also say that what they're wanting to find out is what revenues they would have available to this position and how they go about advertising and filming and equipping, et cetera, so.
I, I would just think that probably part of their strategy or thought would be start January 1, be six months within this budget year.
Yeah, I think you're, I think you're accurate. And I think that all those costs would be shaved in half. And if they wanted to go on a, a federal budget year or calendar budget year and they wanted that commitment, I think we would have to remind them that we're not in a position, uh, to commit to a year's worth of funding right now. Uh, we can only commit within the existing budget year, starting, as you say, probably January 1.
And I think we cut our dues and association budget down. Do we have any room there to absorb? Let's say it's half of that, let's say it's 1,735 dollars roughly.
Well, Denise could answer that, but I think the more.
By the look on her face, I'd say no.
We shave that.
Yeah.
A lot, so.
Yeah, we cut it back from 20 something to 20 or 19.5 or whatever. But I think the more important part of this is, I think this should come out of economic development. I don't think it should be a general fund cost.
How are we doing on that budget?
Well, once again, as I said, I didn't get with Denise and look at the figures, but what if we get 12,000 more and we committed a certain chunk of that?
We just committed some out of there and kind of what we committed to. I'm drawing a blank, I've always been right on top of that one, but we committed to something there.
We did.
It makes sense.
I wanna save the 4,000 below.
Yeah, you're right.
And, and so the amount, the 5% or whatever, whatever it is.
2.3.
2.3, is that the percent of land? I have to go back to what these.
It's the percent of value and all these different things when you're.
The percentage of total acres that, that it rubbed in were 5.77%. So this little piece in Lake County that's part of the Deschutes National Forest is hopefully represented on, um.
What we don't have under what the collaborative work that aligns surface water rights and river miles percent, those, those two categories, we don't have any of that on the Deschutes in Lake County.
Well, put it more in perspective, instead of 5.77%, if we change it over to here in front of us acres, that's 128,000, 254 acres. That's a large amount of land. And so for the dollar return for best management practices on that land, if you broke that down, how much per acre we're gonna invest?
Yes, Denise. I, I, I agree, but I just wanted to be real clear. I do want to say this over here relative to duplication and then be talking about this without having, in my opinion, knowing the program, having been part of the creation of it, the withlet, the cohesive strategy nationally, is this is a sep, this is an actual action group. This is an action collaborative that does work.
So you, you said, you said as our representative, and so by being, by paying the dues, being part of this, not dues, whatever you wanna call it, I guess it would be dues.
Well, be, paying the cost of having the oversight administrator in place for.
And that'll guarantee, that's also the voice at the table.
Yes.
And.
And they, you know, they're, they're going to be doing active management on those lands and fields right along Highway 31, um, the Deschutes Forest that's in Lake County, cause we do have that forest in Lake County.
Well, let me tell you, over the years, and you've done the same, we've seen that particular part of our forest change quite a bit from bugkill to some very active management back 30 years ago to reforestation that's now getting to the difficulties that it needs to be looked at again. I mean, in your, my time driving by there, we've seen a.
Oh, yeah.
A cycle.
Yeah.
And so.
Yeah.
And so...
Yeah.
Okay. It's on for tomorrow?
Yep.
You'll check on the capabilities of...
I was here with Denise, or Denise will round my cage and tell me whether or not we have a reminder. So Denise, any additional department updates?
I don't know. I'm guessing no. I don't know.
Okay. Lay this on.
Couple of things, I guess. We do have our SCOW Ed, SCOW Act meeting here Friday. I was here in this room. If you're able to make it.
Yeah, I got you back a hand. I'm hoping they do, and Ken Kessner are going to be here because I may be over there. I wanted to, but I would commit with another grandchild. I'm a different one. So I've got one grandchild one in one way and one in another.
I did put in a work order to the maintenance guys to bring up some tables for that meeting.
Okay, okay, very good. Please, an update from one component of truly your liaison, but the regional solutions I said on the executive board, today is the deadline to put in for grants. And Dave has put in for a grant in our airport just to make the full board aware, public aware, he put in for that for power and for water out there, improving the infrastructure. That will go on to the full regional solutions. We will evaluate and see which one make the cuts, which would be more comprehensive grant application and make the cut. Dave did put in for that one. I made the fair board where if they could stretch anything, they could put there. I don't know what Ginger, Commissioner Kessner, they've talked about broadly, so I don't know if they put one in there, but that's coming in. Total amount for Clamath and Lake Counties is about three hundred and sixty, three hundred and eighty thousand, I think. So I don't know what amount of applications come in from Clamath and Lake, but we're very much where we're very fortunate. Last time we got a hundred and sixty-five thousand for a railroad. So that, those are out there. Those opportunities are great opportunities that we always apply for whenever we have something that fits. I'm hoping that Airport One fits everything. Our master plan shows it. It should be pretty well received. Our plumbing, wiring is nineteen forty-three, forty-two, or whatever, you know, it's naval base.
Oh, yeah.
So sort of encouraged, hopefully we'll make a cut there. I guess that's about it for the...
Well, as I alluded to earlier, I spent, I was over at Schmal in Gilchrist State Forest for a short while, met with a couple of folks on a couple of future issues, and then spent the majority of the day in Christmas Valley last Friday. Had a lot of interesting visits on a lot of things that are going on. And there would be a little article coming out from Terry Crawford, who wants to speak for the one newspaper up there. But I think it was, it was good for some photo stickers and different views on some topics. And we didn't get into the nitty-gritty into the weeds, but I'd just say that that would probably be some ongoing communication. I think it was helpful. I believe it was helpful. Some of the discussion, they don't have as many issues around the internet service broadband, et cetera, but we all over here essentially, like I've reached out to Representative Bresky, because we've known as a county, we've had activity around, or people attended meetings around broadband issues for years now, but we really haven't seen except for the entities like ESD that's putting in the lineup to pay his late, the broadband fiber optic line. And then the hope that I know from the company that's doing it is to go right on up the corridor into Central Oregon where they have business. But there's discussion, I'm getting out to Plush and Adele, and that discussion's been going on for quite some time. Barbara Vandenberg got noticed that I was involved in this with Representative Bresky, and so she reached out to me here a week and a half ago. I think it was at our ED advisory meeting. We had some discussion later that day in the office, and she was showing me examples of what's happening to the two businesses they have out in Plush. And in that whole process, you know, I reminded Representative Bresky, I reminded Barbara, I reminded everybody that I'm no expert in this. I just felt like we weren't going anywhere, and I wanted to see if I could help in any way without, you know, crossing over into somebody else's line that's been working on this for years. And it's been well received because Representative Bresky, just going back a little bit, reached out to the Century, the Lamele Ferris folks, they have, and he had a meeting with them, and he and I haven't chatted since then, but both of them, the representatives for him, Oregon and Worthington, and I don't know where all they represent besides there, but Samantha Ritter Bush and then Trey Hendrix, who I think she reports to him, both have agreed that they want to come down to Lake County again this year. And I suggested, based on Barbara's, because I told Barbara that, I suggested that maybe we do a field trip or, or get around to, me not doing the field trip, but a field trip be done out to Plush to her house. She's willing to show them just exactly what she's dealing with as a business person and to other businesses that are greatly impacted. I got the idea, and I've got a conference call with Samantha and Trey out one today from one to two. They want to, you know, block out an hour, so it'll be before we come back into our executive section at two. Long story short is what I'm, and I've kept Ginger in the loop with my correspondence is not the most recent, but I want to hand that back to those two that have been working on this. There's no sense nutting in the water with another commissioner. And so, you know, if we can get closer to getting resolution to the internet access and reliability issues through Samantha and Trey out in Plush, I would feel good about that. And I don't need to be right in the middle of it because I'm the least knowledgeable of anybody. So that's kind of the short version on that, what's going on there. As I said, this panel discussion at AOC with the regional forester Jim Penya, with the state director Jamie Connell, with the state representative for ODF Nancy Hirsch, who I know you've met before, she's been down here, and Nancy's a great person. Then there'll be Senator Betsy Johnson, Commissioner Simon Hare from Josephine County, and myself. And I think they're going to spread this season and talk, have those agency administrators. They're going to give them hope of this past fire seasons and other things through panels. It's kind of open ended. Mike called me, you know, because he was, you know, I was a little nervous about my, I'm concerned about insulting my fellow commissioners who I think are to a degree, to a degree only since this is being recorded or being junk heads on this issue. Yeah.
Well, Commissioner, I got to say something because on this particular issue, when we talk fire and we talk forest management, it's easy for people to get up and beat your chest and say, this is what we need. What you've done over the years is a full evaluation and projection of how our forest can be managed different, fire behavior, firefighting. You bring a lot to this. So it's okay if it's not the norm by what people want to hear. That is the change that I've always respected out of you and how you work forward, and that's a change where we'll get someplace someday. So even though some people may step back, it's going to be emotional, but it's not going to be factual. And what you've done is factual information, and so I support you very much. Some of your panelists may beat to the drum of the emotional side of it, and even to the extent that the counties need to take over forest, and we couldn't even afford lawn fire suppression system without bankrupting our whole county. So I'm just encouraging you to just stay true to what the factual information you've worked on over the years and put it out there. Let people judge by the factual information if they want to be emotional. You're not going to change many things.
Well, Commissioner, I appreciate those comments, and I think you're right on the money. And I think the challenge is going to be, first and foremost, I probably, and Susan, she said, you hit on four different things that would be incredibly valuable. She said they work for me just listening, and we talked for an hour. She said, unfortunately, we're not going to have that amount of time. But what I want to start with is just essentially saying, because we're there here in Lake County, it was some growing pains for, you know, the full board to be where we're at with the agencies, is there's methodologies to interact with your state and federal partners in your communities. But you have, you know, and honestly, we've developed, and NACO has to, there's a, I'm not at the Whitley meeting this week, it's the actual meeting's tomorrow in DC, but Joe's back there and Katie's back there, and they're meeting with NACO on the county playbook. So it's going to be interactive for new commissioners, any commissioners, to see where, they can pick where they think they are in their relationship or knowledge of forest health, managed forests, firefighting, et cetera. And then it walks you through how to do this, stuff we already do that we know were welcome to do, from preseason updates to on-durancy's and notifications of fire activity to our ability to go to fire camp, to go to the incident command post and interact, but to develop those relationships with those managers of the agencies so that you know you're not only welcome, but you're encouraged to be there and be part of the discussion and express the concerns and represent your constituents. And that's what I want to convey first and foremost to our group is, you know, have we done that? You know, have we engaged or are we totally separate and all we're doing is just saying everybody over there is the bad?
Or basically each side.
Yeah, exactly. And it's a two-way street. Once you start down that, that the interaction starts to happen. People start to pop in your office just to give you a quick update. Might not have anything to do with forest health or fire. Might have to do with road, you know, or access, those types of things. So I think you're right on the money. And then we can start to recognize that ninety-five percent of the activities out there related to fire are positive outcomes. And so we're not just saying everything about firefighting is bad and we need to have somebody else do it, you know, and they're totally irresponsible in how they're handling these things. And then we can hone in on the five percent, see what can we effectively change in, say, wilderness fire policy.
Okay. A small suggestion, on your ninety-five percent, you get it. It's just normal talk for you. You have to explain that a little bit.
Oh, in that percent?
Ninety-five percent of fires out there on the initial attack or taken care of are kept to ten acres or less or whatever.
Yeah.
We're talking about five percent, but you got to hit people in the face of what that ninety-five percent is because not everybody gets it, Dan.
You're exactly right, and probably for the brevity today, that was, but you'll have to remind me as I'm talking at the conference. Because what I want to suggest, and I don't want to be way off base, but the five percent makes up about ninety-eight percent of the acres burned. The ninety-five percent makes up about two percent of the acres burned. And so you're exactly right. And we can throw cost in there, what makes up those costs, and that's why Senator White has been working on this theme unfunded, the two percent on the highest cost fires get funded through the emergency funding on hurricanes and floods and all those things. All of that stuff, which isn't the long-term answer, because then we'll flip over to the management side of things. And I want to suggest to the group that, and you've heard me say this a hundred thousand times, we're picking and we're shooting at the wrong target. And if our congressional staff are there, you know, I'm going to be respectful, but I'm going to remind folks, it has to come. The legislation, the executive orders, the legislation, the judicial process, all happens in DC, Paul. And we're picking and shooting and tearing apart our local community members that are part of the agencies. It doesn't mean there aren't agency folks that are part of the problem, but by and large, most of them want to be part of the solution, and they're as frustrated as we are.
You're going where I was going to, I mean, you're going to have such a limited amount of time to try to articulate something so complex. That's really not as complex if you think about it. But Judge Grasty's now retired, but the component nobody thinks about is those jobs from the federal government within your community. And you lose one federal job, a lot of times your average median income on these rural areas goes down some. Judge Grasty talked about this many times.
Yeah.
It's not what a lot of commissioners want to hear.
No.
But they don't take that into consideration that, that those jobs and those dollars that are spent in your community with payrolls and on and on and on, your service and everything, service of the vehicle, service of their equipment and everything keeps your economy going in your communities. And so a lot of the, as you're talking that part, the policy, it's up here, legislation, law from our congressional people. At times, a messenger, the one's trying to put it on the ground, everyone to get crucified.
Yeah.
And like you say, not always do they use all the tools in the toolbox. They'd like to use what they have, but they need more tools. They need better tools.
Well, they do. They just, yeah, they need to be able to get that, you know, there's certain things that are never going to go away between the danger species that are clean water, clean air. But they actually need the process to help simplify to reflect, it's multiple use management on a sustainable basis for that side of the ledger. And then the firefighting becomes a lot easier to do because you have healthy conditions that these fires are burning in, and they don't have the severe rates of spread and resistance to control and just incredibly challenging conditions that no one's ever seen in anyone's lifetime. So all of that. But I also wanted to turn to my colleague Senator Johnson and suggest that, you know, and I need to make a copy of that article on the Herald and News yesterday where the commissioners in Clamath County are considering a similar letter to Josephine County, essentially chastising the Forest Service, and I don't know what all the components are, but Senator Luntick, I was putting in there, is suggesting that any and all that might have at any point in time over time led to the devastating fires in two thousand and seventeen should be immediately fired by the Department, US Department of Ags Secretary, and a whole bunch of other stuff in there. And I'm going to suggest to Senator Johnson, not that she said that, that it doesn't help when we have state senators or state representatives making those kind of outlandish statements, that they need to be somehow, and then third group of colleagues, they need to be condemned for that kind of outlandish behavior and rhetoric.
So if it's any consolation, I'll be in the audience with one bucket of eggs, one bucket of tomatoes in the back.
So that's all I've got. Sorry I took so much time.
No, we could talk about that forever.
Yes. So we will, if you're okay.
Oh. Recessing.
Nope. We're not going to recess quite yet. We, unfortunately, in this forum, and it probably could have and should have happened earlier, but we need to acknowledge our longtime administrative assistant, who's been with us through thick and thin and a lot of really positive changes, and many of those have came as a result of her work. And we've talked about it before, but, you know, we were just talking earlier, special transportation, county vehicle program, the accountability, you know, through the eight or ten budgets that Denise takes care of and has really done a tremendous job. And this is her last official meeting here today. And as I told you earlier, apologize about not letting time slip by because we want to do something a little bit more, and we're wanting to do that next week while we're in a board meeting, but...
Yeah, Denise, it's not without saying, there's so much... Yeah, Denise, it's not without saying, there's so much to say. You've been a great partner, great friend. The things you've done, as I'm sitting here this last week, trying to figure out as we go through and go through interviews to replace you, thinking of when you first came on, advice I gave you, advice you've given me over the years, to think about the vehicle program, how I can just go ask, was this vehicle's condition, what have we spent on it, the jackets that you have made, and the way that's taken care of, incredible. I've asked you to sit on committees to make hard decisions, recommendations to the Board of Commissioners for reorganization, been a great partner there with the rest of the people I put on those committees. Ask you to step up and do the Wolf Committee, no extra compensation, you just say, yes, I'll do it, Brad. And I could go on and on, and I, I'm not happy that you're leaving, I'll be perfectly honest with you, I'm in the comfort zone of having the best administrative assistant I've worked with in my seventeen years. I've always told you that, whatever decision you make in life, I will support, and I support you moving on, but you will be truly missed here, and we're just doing this because today's last meeting, you're going to be here, wanted to put it out in the public sector, and we probably should, I don't think there's more audience here.
That's all right.
But we will be doing something, a little something later on, but thank you for your years of service, can't thank you enough, and you're going to be a hard person to replace.
And, well, well said, Commissioner, and hopefully Jamie takes advantage of this, not right this second, but the opportunity to visit Denise a little bit, because it's a significant hole in our county function and government, her, her role in the county, and her always having a smile on her face, when I know there's days that there's no way I would have a smile on my face, I'm not sure I'd be here. Can't be overstated, and I want to talk about one other program that we just take for granted now. I know when I came into office and Commissioner Winters and Lily was the IT program, holy smokes, we want to talk about, you know, I was sitting here thinking, second to none in counties of our size, I think, given where we were and where we're at, is second to none over any of them. Incredibly involved, I mean, you're our lead, you're our administrator over the, our folks who provide the service, but you're, you're, I mean, you just went through it, you look at savings and better function and better service, just with our computers, not to mention our desktops and laptops, and this working and that working, and these gizmos and those gizmos, and our storage capability, and our security, and all of these types of, I mean, you probably should have went to the cybersecurity meeting, I listened to yesterday, but with all that said, I mean, it is, it is, it is just fantastic, and we just take it for granted.
And, well said on the efficiency side.
Yeah.
That's where I, on the vehicles and other thing, and, yeah, I, and you said that, there's so much to say, Denise, but the one thing any department has, and you know my words, is own your budget. I've always told you that, thank you, because you've always owned the budget, even whenever we varied from your direction to us and suggestions it's been, even with some frustration to the time, we still own the budget that you presented with, no matter how we present those pieces, so thank you for that. Something that I don't think people really notice is how hard it is to set as administrative assistant and know everything that we do, and sit there and take minutes and not engage whenever you would love to engage.
There are days.
That's a respect thing to the Board of Commissioners, that is truly appreciated over the years, because of, that's a fine line. You've always respected the position of the Board of Commissioners, our views and everything, and you've been able to sit there at times whenever you would really like to maybe disagree or make a suggestion that we had forgot, so thank you for that also, Denise, and Commissioner, I could just talk a lot, I mean...
Well, in the community, the word was out, you know, and even, I was, as I said, I was up in North Lake, and the disappointment on behalf of so many people who have got to know you or me previously, they know what we're losing, and, you know, the condolences have been flowing, you know, over the weekend, I was at a birthday party and had people talking to me about it, and, you know, I'm honoring the fact that, that, as Commissioner Winters said, that was a decision that you felt under the circumstances was the best for you, and that's pretty much how we leave it, you know, because we respect you. But it doesn't, doesn't change the fact that people out there know how incredibly valuable and, and great employee of the county, and administrator of so many services that you have been, and that speaks volumes to know, we always complain about how little the citizens know about different things that are on, that's one area where they know, because you've interacted with them, you know, you've worked with them, and...
There's certain calls that we don't need to miss.
Yeah, I mean, they're going to, to a person, they're all going to miss you being here, so...
Wow, you guys almost taught me this thing, so...
I got another five minutes before they talk.
Well, the day's not over.
It's not over, the day's not over, my, my stuff isn't fully unloaded out of my car. I would just like to say thank you to the two of you, you have been fantastic to work for. Anyone who's asked me any questions about this job, I'm very fair in setting hands down, it's the greatest job I've ever had. Where else can you come to work and do eighteen different things in one day that are not related to each other? I learn every day, I meet amazing people every day, I mean, how many people can say Congressman Walton knows him by first name? That's pretty awesome, even if he's asking his aides as he's walking in the door, now what is her name? It doesn't matter.
He knows you very well.
You know, I mean, people at the Governor's Office and AOC, and, oh my gosh, I've met amazing people, and learned more here than probably more I wanted to, but, you know, government is a different, a different beast, and I commend you and anyone who runs for any office, because I'm pretty sure when you're running, you'll have no idea what you're really getting yourself into, and it's a big job, it's, it's not an easy job. I sit here and I watch you, and nine times out of ten, I'm pretty sure what decision you're going to make on any given item, and we get in there, and once in a while, we vote another direction, and I'm, I'm as surprised as anybody here, because I just knew I had it figured out, I mean, you know, you guys do a fantastic job. People out there have no idea the research you guys put into every decision you make. I can honestly say that I fully believe every decision you've ever made, you have felt it is in the best interest of our county and our citizens, and no one, no one will ever change that opinion, for me, of you two gentlemen. I am...
It's supposed to be about Denise.
I'm very sad to leave. I know, but I just want to say that what a great family it's been. The staff at Lake County, people out there need to know, staff at Lake County is, there's no, like no other, we have people here that, they know, they know more about their jobs than they really have to know.
Out of thirty-six counties, we're number one.
We're number one, we are, and, and I'm, I'm third generation of Lake County, my kids are fourth generation, and with great people like you and us, I only see it getting better and better. I'm sad to leave my county, not just my county family, but Lake County in general, but, you know, life's got a funny way of sending you in your direction, so we're going to see where that goes. I'm not selling my house, so who knows, I might, we call it the Lakeview magnet, and it sucks you right back sometimes, so we'll see, but I know you're going to do a great job, and your next person's going to take all those great programs and make them better, so...
We can only hope, Denise, that they will, probably will be better, but hopefully they, whoever it is, can step in and maintain what you've established, because it's never, it was never here before. I just have to make one other quick comment, because I really thank you for all the wonderful things that you've said, and I know you really feel those, but the one I really appreciated out of all of them was the fact that you, and I know you need that, but the general public doesn't, we don't claim to make the best decisions in the world, but when we make them, we're trying to make them with that in mind, that it is the best decision, given the information that we researched and...
When I've watched you guys fight with, this isn't what I, what I want, or what I, I, my path, but I really feel it is best, I mean, we've had those arguments, you guys have independently come into my office and said, what do you think? I think you really messed up, and you, you tell me, this is why I voted the way I did, and I would vote again after hearing what I've heard and researching what I've researched, and, yeah, couldn't ask, couldn't ask for, for better, better gentlemen in those seats, just truly, truly couldn't, so, yeah.
I'll be joining...
I learned everything from you, so...
You just talked, you just stayed here.
I'll, I'll be joining Denise here in another period of time, so...
Yeah, I'll buy you lunch, when you get on the other side, I'll buy you lunch.
Yes.
Yeah. All right, so...
So we will recess until two PM today, and Jimmy, we're going to be going into, I think the plan now is we'll, we'll come back at two, we're going to end up recessing again as we go into executive session and reconvene at two thirty, that's when the other commissioner said, I think he said he could be back, might be as late as three, but we'll be going in under...
That's stated on the name there.
It's, yeah, it, executive session to do employment, so...